So getting familiar with those numbers and you can start running circles around these questions. But yeah, it just takes some practice.
Welcome to the ASVAB Domination Podcast. Where we help you crush the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery, also known as the ASVAB. In order to achieve your dreams of serving in the United States Armed Forces. I'm your host, Mickey Gaminal. And I'm excited to share my years of experience and expertise in ASVAB preparation with you. In each episode, we'll dive deep into test material, strategies for success, and insights from military veterans and experts. Whether you're a high school student considering military service, or a seasoned professional seeking to advance your career. This podcast is your ultimate guide to mastering the ASVAB and achieving your goals. Let's dominate the ASVAB together.
Alright, do you hear me loud and clear?
Loud and clear.
How you doing?
I'm doing good. How's it going today?
Pretty good, pretty good.
Right on. Cool, man. So were you able to go through any of the course at all, or how'd it go?
Yeah, I was able to go through the course and everything is working so far, so.
Cool. Nice. Well, is there anything that you wanted to cover today?
Terms of what's in the course, like any questions or what?
Yeah, yeah. If you have questions from the course, or if you have questions from somewhere else, this is fine. Any, pretty much any questions in general, like I can help you with any of the math stuff is my specialty. Uh, but we could focus on English or science, whatever you need help with. Basically, easiest thing is gonna be just asking you like what you typically struggle with, making a list, and then kind of going through that. Does that work for you?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I didn't fully go through all the material, so I don't have any questions so far. But I guess my question before. This is like, I guess in the future, if I s- if I feel. That I guess confused on, if you can help me out, like certain problems or questions. So alright now, nothing on top of my head, so.
Okay, yeah, typically what I'll do is I'll have my students just send me their questions. And so I don't know if I've got a bunch of, yeah, I've been playing a lot of video games lately and doing some home remodeling. But you can see here that I get a ton of different questions uh, that students will send in. And so we go through whatever questions they're struggling with, basically. So that's why I always recommend like take a picture if you see any questions that you don't know how to answer, and then we can kind of cover those, okay?
Okay.
Is there any question that jumps to mind is something that you might want to cover today?
Hold up.
Yep, and you can text it to me directly if that's easier, I can pick it up right here.
Okay, let me just log in real quick.
Yeah, for sure. I do have one question that I did like. I saw it on Instagram earlier today. I've been working with these guys, these ASVAB success guys. I had them on my podcast just recently. So where did you? You'd heard of me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
No, where did you say you'd heard of me from? Was it from Montalvo?
Yeah. That's where I got, that's where I heard of you from, so.
Nice, that's cool.
It was just like word of mouth.
So cool. Alright, sweet. So this is one question we could cover if you want. So for math knowledge and arithmetic reasoning, you're gonna want to spend about uh, probably a minute, maybe a minute and a half per question. Um, once you start getting up to three or four minutes, you're going over on time. And so you're starting to take from questions that you'll have at the end, right, at a certain point. So if you want, I can time you while you go through this question, and then we can kind of work on it together. That works for you.
Okay, that works.
Alright, cool. Alright, just let me know when you start. That way I can time you on my watch here. No worries. I forgot to set the timer on you. But go ahead, just let me know if you get stuck. I want to know where you get stuck. And then if you think you have things that are right, I want to figure out where that is too. So it's a lot easier to build. Once there's something there, right? If you just kind of throw your hands up and you're like, I don't know what to do, it's really hard to to learn from that. Cause it's kind of like square zero. But if you have a couple guesses of what might be the right first or second or third steps, that's gonna help you a lot.
Yes, I can't figure it out, but what did? I remember for the fractions. For the percentages, you move the decimal. I guess when it comes to double digits, you move it two places to the left. And then for the. So I guess I moved the digits two places to the left for twelve to left. And then five percent, one digit to the left. And then I would divide.
We'll focus on that for now, right? So is five percent equal to point five? That's my first question for you.
Yes.
Cool. Now, the way that you can do percent, so it's not, it's that's incorrect, right? I tried to catch you making a mistake. The reason that it's not correct is what you want to think of is cents, right? Dollars and cents. That's where percent comes from. And so is five cents equal to point five dollars?
No.
No, what is point five dollars equal?
Point five dollars would be five dollars fifty cent.
It's just what? Point five dollars, what's half of a dollar?
Oh, can't hear you right.
Yes.
Audio fixed. Alright, turn on phone now?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so point five is not gonna be equal to fif- five percent. It's actually equal to fifty percent.
Okay.
So given that, what do you think five percent would be? If you were to write five cents, what would it look like?
It'll be point zero five.
Exactly. So you're always moving it two digits to the left, always. Percent's always are gonna be two digits. Just keep that in mind. Even whether it's one, like one percent is the same as one cent, rather than point one, which is now ten cents.
Okay. Okay, I'm starting to get it. So. Yeah, so basically if it's just point five fifty, well, it's point zero five five. But let's say if it's like a hundred, it'd just be one point. Zero zero zero.
Exactly, it's one dollar, right? So if you take it back to a dollar, a hundred percent, it's gonna be one dollar. Right, or one point zero zero, one whole.
Okay.
Alright, so that's gonna be some good percent work. So we figured out twelve percent equals point one two, five. Five percent equals point zero five, and that's fine to start. But now what we want to do is we want to have, what's her name? June lose weight at some sort of a rate. So it's kind of a whole new piece. Okay, and so I know the instinct is if you're not super used to math, you kind of try to make it more complicated than it needs to be. Anytime you're taking a percentage of a number, you want to just multiply it.
Okay.
Alright, so the idea is if I wanted like fifty percent of thirty. Right, that's gonna be thirty times point five. And so can you tell me what is half of thirty?
Fifteen?
That's right. So point five fifty percent should solve to be fifteen. So let's prove that real quick and see if that's true. So five times zero is zero, five times three is fifteen. And then we gotta remember to shift the decimal based on the number of decimals in the question. So in this case, we have point five, which is just one shift. So we're gonna shift the answer there. Shift the decimal once we have our answer, and that's where that fifteen point zero comes from. So fifty percent of thirty is fifteen. Questions?
Yeah, so for the, so since there's like a decimal for the. Problem, I guess for this case, I just completely get rid of it, or?
Nope, you still leave it, just like we did here, right? We left it there as a point five, so fifty percent still.
Okay.
Right, this is still a decimal, that's a valid decimal. So here, you're gonna do the same thing. You're gonna multiply her weight, what's her weight?
One eighty.
Very good, and you're gonna times that by what?
By fifteen?
Nope, is, where's the fifteen?
From the. The fifteens from the twelve and the five.
From these two. So first she's gonna lose twelve percent, and then she's gonna lose another five percent after that. So first, you're just gonna do one thing at a time, cause what is twelve plus five?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So it would be a different percentage if you used seventeen percent. But neither of those is gonna be exactly right. In this case, what we want to do is we want to figure out how much she lost at twelve percent. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you think we go about taking twelve percent of a hundred and eighty?
Think bud, we'll multiply, right?
Yep, just like we did with the thirty times the point five. But now we're gonna do instead, one hundred and eighty times the point one two. Alright, I'm gonna let you do this one on your own. I will time you for this, cause this is math facts. So this is good practice as well. Ready, set, go?
I got eleven point sixty.
Cool. You're close, but I think there's, there might be a number carried here. That's, that's a mistake. So what, what's always gonna help you here is estimates. Alright, so do you know how to take like ten percent of a number pretty quickly? Like if you ever go out tipping or anything like that, if you ever have a tip a server, you can figure out ten percent really easily. If you, let's say it's seventeen twenty-five. Ten percent's just gonna be one shift. To the left. So it's going to be. One point seven two five. So same thing here, if I were to shift, so twelve percent's more than ten percent, right? Ten percent of a hundred and eighty would be what? If we use this like shift method?
Ten percent of one eighty, that'd be. One point, oh, you said one eighty, that'd be one?
Yep, you're close.
One point eight eighty.
It's gonna be, it's actually just gonna be eighteen. Right, so you know like ten dimes will make a dollar, right?
Yes.
So same thing here, ten eighteens is gonna make one hundred and eighty. So ten percent of a hundred and eighty is eighteen. That makes sense? So just one tenth of that number is gonna be that eighteen. So same thing here. It's gonna be more than eighteen, it has to be more than eighteen, because twelve percent's more than ten percent. So this is where estimating kind of helps. So you figure, okay, a hundred and eighty, ten percent of a hundred and eighty is eighteen. Twelve percent's gonna be a little bit more. So it's gonna be right around twenty, eleven too low. So I think what happened is you probably forgot to carry a one somewhere, if you want to double check your work.
Do it again. Got one more question. So I guess for ten percent, usually to get that. You would move the decimal. You move the decimal to the right one time for that ten percent?
Yeah, well, so ten percent. Is equal to point one, right? And so same thing, right? If you look at this number. A hundred and eighty times point one, well, anything times one is what?
One.
It's, it's just itself, right?
So.
If I times jet by one, I just have jet. If I times jet by two, now I got two jets. But if I just times it by one, only got one of you, right? Same thing here, if I times a hundred and eighty by one, it's still a hundred and eighty. But we shift the decimal because there's a decimal in the question. So now it becomes that eighteen.
Okay.
So that helps with estimates. Now, if we're doing just over ten percent, which is gonna be that twelve percent. It's gotta be just over eighteen. Does that make sense? It's gonna be a little bit more than eighteen. And now eleven point six, that's not just over eighteen, that's below eighteen. So we gotta figure out where the mistake is. And I, like I said, I think you forgot to carry just a single digit, single one.
Twenty-one point sixty.
That's right. So it's this one right here, right? So twenty-one point six, which is a lot of weight. She lost twenty-one pounds in a month, that's pretty good. Alright, so let's go through. I'm just gonna do exactly what you did earlier, I'm sure. So two times zero is zero. Two times eight is sixteen, carry the one. Two times one is two, plus one is three. And then shift over for the new digit. So one times zero is zero, one times eight is eight, one times one is one. Add this up, zero, six, eight plus three is eleven, and that's where your eleven came from. But it should be twenty-one point six.
Yeah. I see what I did wrong when I did it over again. So I forgot to. Add that one.
Cool, not bad, not bad. It's, those are the mistakes you want to be looking for, right? Cause that's, that's one of like those easier ones that they're gonna ask is like, if I lowered this amount by three percent, what's the answer? And so you do multiply first to figure out that piece. And then now you can lower her weight, right? If I wanted to, I could go one eighty minus twenty-one point six to figure out how much she weighs now, right? But that's not what the question's asking. If you look at the question, it says now five percent of her total weight, what's the average over those two? And so this gets a little bit stickier, because now five percent of her total weight is kind of up in the air. Right, is it gonna be five percent of her original weight, back in whatever August? Or is it gonna be five percent of her current rate now that it's May, right? Because her weight did change between those two times. And so this question's not the most perfectly written. But we can pause here and think which one of these answers looks like it makes the most sense. So remember, we did get twenty-one point six. What that twenty-one point six represents is twelve percent of a hundred and eighty. Pounds. Is twenty-one point six. So which answer would you guess is right here?
It'll be B.
Well, twenty-one point six is listed, but the thing is, is there's a whole nother half of this question. So after she lost that amount, she lost another little bit. And the question is asking, what's the average that was lost over those two months? So if, do you think she lost more weight or less weight in that next month?
More weight?
Twelve percent on the first, five percent on the second. You think she lost?
She lost less weight, yeah.
She lost less weight. So is that gonna bring the average up or down from twenty-one point six? Down, yeah. And so you can actually process of eliminate this one pretty decent. I believe fifteen point three is the correct answer, but we can go through and verify that. What you would do then is take five percent of her new weight. And then take the average between those two.
So how would you?
Go ahead.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Oh yeah, how would you do that? The, I guess see if it's fifteen?
Yeah, so what you would do then is you would go through, figure out her new weight. So this would be a hundred and eighty point zero, take away however much weight she lost. Do you wanna, you can go for that one.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm starting to get it. Okay, yeah. Oh, I got fifteen point ninety-four.
Cool. So make sure when you're subtracting, decimal, adding or subtracting, decimal stay in a line. But multiplying or dividing, that's where they can shift around.
Okay.
So if she went down to fifteen pounds from a hundred and eighty, that's a lot of weight lost, right? So you don't want her to lose that much weight. You just want to take away twenty-one pounds, twenty-one point six pounds. And so not fifteen point nine four, but one fifty nine point four. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And now we would need to find five percent of this new weight. So how do we do that?
We'll divide?
Nope, we still don't divide. Just like we took twelve percent of one eighty, now we want. Five percent of one fifty nine point four.
So it'll be fifteen, one fifty nine point four times zero point five.
What is zero, is zero point five equal to five percent?
No, I mean point zero five.
Perfect, just like five cents, exactly right. So then go ahead, change that to point zero five, and multiply it out, tell me what you get.
Yeah, I got seven hundred ninety-seven point zero zero zero.
Something like that?
Yes.
Cool. Now this is another great opportunity to talk about estimating. We started with one fifty-nine, we'll call that one fifty to keep it easy, right? You could call it one hundred or two hundred too, to keep it simple either way. So what is five percent of one fifty? Or if it's easier, what's five percent of one hundred?
Five percent of one hundred be ninety-five.
That's if you took away the five percent. That's a five percent decrease in a hundred. But what is five percent of a hundred?
Five percent of a hundred?
You're close, like you're using the right numbers, you're just overthinking. Just like when you talk about dividing to take percentages of numbers. Same thing here. So five percent of a hundred is probably the easiest answer you could guess. Ninety-five is overthinking it.
One oh five?
That's an increase.
Five percent.
Well, it's.
Hundred point five?
Let's go to, that's, that's still overthinking. What, what, remember the ten percent rule? We just shift the decimal? So what's ten percent of a hundred?
Ninety, point ninety.
Mm-mm, that doesn't just shift decimal. What is ten, we start with a hundred, and then we just shift that decimal, we get, what's ten percent?
Oh, it's point five. I mean, ten percent is like point ten.
So. You have a hundred pennies, right?
Okay.
I want ten percent of those. How many pennies are you gonna give me? Small piece, I just want ten percent. How many pennies?
I give you ten.
You give me ten, that's it, right? What's five percent of a hundred?
Five.
Of course, of course, five percent of a hundred is five, right? So if we look back at five percent of one fifty or whatever, there's no way it's gonna be like seven ninety-seven. So what do you think it is? If we were to get that closer to five? Five percent of one fifty nine point four is gonna be, where should I put the decimal? Should I put it? Should I put it here, 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 here? Where do you think it would go? Remember, we want it to be close to that five. What would you do, seventy-nine?
The decimal after the first zero?
After the first zero right here?
Yes.
So this is seven thousand nine hundred and seventy. That's not close to five. That's a lot more, right? So what, we want it close to five.
I'm thinking of seventy-nine point seven?
Yep, so seventy-nine point seven is still seventy-nine, that's almost eighty. That's still not really five pennies, is it? What's gonna get us closer to that five pennies? Bring it down, make it a smaller number.
Seven point ninety-seven?
That's right, seven point nine seven is close. Zero point seven is too small, that's nowhere near five. Seven point nine, that's as close as we're gonna get. So seven point nine seven is the right answer.
Okay.
So five percent of one fifty nine point four, seven point nine seven. And we'll go through, we'll do the math and like show it, but I want you to get kind of familiar with the, with the simplicity side of it, right? Like five percent is a small piece, it's this big of a piece, right? So start thinking in those terms, and these questions will be a lot simpler for you.
Okay.
Alright, so seven point nine seven, this is the second amount of weight she lost. What was the first amount of weight she lost?
Twenty-one point six.
Very good. What is the average between these two? Cause that's what the question's asking. What is the average weight she lost over the first two months? And it might be easier if you look at the answers, but remember, we have almost eight and about twenty-one and a half. Are you taking the average?
The average, I. Got, uh, I got thirteen point forty-three.
You might be right. So remember, average is going to be. The, I mean, I always say the sum of numbers divided by the number of numbers. So this is gonna be seven point nine seven plus twenty-one point six, divided by two. That's how you take.
Yeah, I see what I did wrong.
Cool. But like, you could just think like in between these two numbers, what's like the midpoint? That's the same way. That's what dividing by two is for, is to find what the midpoint between these two numbers is. So what do you think would be the, the middle between almost eight and twenty-two-ish? If you were to look at these answers. And it might help to do like a number line. So over here is ten, over here's fifteen. Over here's twenty, and so I'll put the twenty-two a little closer. Twenty-two, I'll put the eight real close here. Eight, and so what would be about the middle-ish?
It would be. Yeah, it'll be fifteen.
Yep, fifteen point three. This just confirms your answer, but yeah, that's gonna be the right answer.
Okay.
Alright. Now let's do the actual math. So I'm gonna show you the five percent of one fifty nine point four. Alright, and then we can take the average as well, so. Five percent of one fifty nine point four, then average. Of weights. Cool, so it's just two weights, average, average is very simply going to be all the numbers added together. Divided by. However many numbers there are. Call this the number of numbers. That's how you find the average. So the, in this case, it's just two numbers. There's the twenty-one point six and the seven point nine seven. And so that's that part. But let's go through, we'll take the five percent first. So one fifty nine point four times point five, right? Is it right?
Whoa.
Is point five five percent?
Point five five percent?
Is point five five percent? This is the main thing I'm trying to get through on this lesson. Is point five five percent? We covered it by twice so far. Does zero point five equal five percent?
Yes.
Zero point five equals fifty percent. If I want five percent, I need.
Oh, wait, wait, no, zero point. It'll be zero point one five.
That's fifteen percent. One five is fifteen, so zero point zero five is five percent. You remember that? We covered it somewhere. Well, we covered it here in the beginning, right here. Right, zero point five is fifty percent, zero point zero five is five percent.
So it'll be. Make he go back, think I got it. So it'll be. Zero point zero. No, be point zero, or just zero point zero one.
Uh, where's the one from?
The one from one fifty-nine.
Oh, I see, you're looking up here. No, just the, I'm, I'm just taking five percent. So when you took five percent of one fifty nine point four, you want it to look like this.
Oh, okay.
You may have had it looking. Like this. And that's fine, as long as at the end you put the decimal in the right place, which was that seven point nine pounds. You remember that?
Yes, I remember that.
Okay, so the answer's gonna be like seven point nine. I think you did all of that part right. But knowing where to put the decimal is going to be based on how many decimals are in the question.
Okay.
Alright, so if we're looking at this question here. And we multiply, five times four is twenty, five times nine, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven. Five times five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Five times one is five, one seven. And this is what you got, right? Seven ninety-seven zero, right?
Very fun. Yeah, I'm so used to the calculator.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. Try this out again, yeah. Do it again. Okay, I got the fixed, so.
I think you had it right. I mean, you said seven ninety-seven.
Yeah, I had something.
You had a couple zeros.
Yeah, I had something. Completely off, but yeah, I got it right.
I mean, this is right. And this is the number you gave me. It's just all these zeros were misguided. Maybe one of the zeros is okay, but everything else might have been too much.
That's alright.
It's not too bad. I mean, you have good, you have good skills, like your math facts aren't too bad. You've gotten most of your addition, subtraction, and multiplication, right? But yeah, it's about figuring out how these decimals work. But it's made to make sense. That's the important thing that I always tell my students is like, math should make sense. Like that's why it came into being. Was to like make numbers easier to work with. And so it may feel like it doesn't, it's not easy right now. It'll get there if you practice with it. Alright, so if we check now, the number of decimal places up here. That decimal was right there, and that was one. And then over here, it's two. So how many is that altogether? One and two?
That would be. It'd be three decimals.
Yep, three decimals. So we start here, and then we count three to the left, one, two, three, and that's where we get that seven point nine seven.
Okay.
Cool. And so if she can't lose seventy-nine pounds, right? That'd be way too much weight loss. She only lost five percent. So she started at one fifty-nine, lost five percent more, which is gonna be that seven point nine seven. Alright. Now, there's one last step. So we got this twenty-one point six that she lost originally. Now, there's one last step, so we got this twenty one point six that she lost originally. And the seven point nine seven that she lost second time, and now we finally do what you've talked about a couple times here, we're actually going to divide. Right, we're gonna use this averages formula. And we, there's a division right there, that's what that fraction bar means is divide, right? So what are the two numbers that we're gonna add together? What are the two weights that she lost?
Be twenty one point. Twenty one point six and twenty one point six and thirteen point forty three, then you divide by the two.
Yeah, well, it's the seven point nine seven, right? Remember, the five percent is what she lost the second time.
Alright, so I got. Point. Seventy eight in the remainder. As one.
Cool, you might be right, so did you add these, you added these two numbers together first?
Yes, twenty one. Twenty, twenty one point sixty plus seven point ninety seven. By two, cause those, those, these are only two averages.
Perfect, only two data points for this average, very good, alright, cool, let's try it. Twenty one point six plus seven point nine seven. And let's see if our numbers are the same, so seven, five. Nine. Twenty nine point five seven, is that what you got?
Yeah.
Perfect, and then you divided by two?
Yes.
Perfect, this is where I would break, right, I would take a break here and say, what is twenty nine point five seven close to?
Thirty?
Thirty, and what is thirty divided by two?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and so that's where I would pick this answer. Personally, I think there's an error somewhere in this question, I mean, it was just taken from Instagram, but that's why I would go with this answer. My guess is what happened is they took five percent of her original weight, they did five percent of a hundred and eighty pounds. Which is going to be bigger than that seven point nine seven. Does that make sense? So if we took five percent of a hundred and eighty. We might get that fifteen point three that we're looking for. Okay, so zero. Shifted twice, five point four. So five point four now, plus the original one, which was twenty one point six, right?
Yes.
And maybe this is what is the answer they're looking for. No, I don't think that's gonna work either, twenty seven point oh, divided by two, still isn't low enough to be close to that twelve either. Right, that twelve point eight's way too low. So fifteen point three is the best answer here, I think they made a mistake somewhere in writing this question. But hopefully you got some practice out of it, right? You learned a little bit about percentages. And you learned a little bit about averages, you did the averages pretty much on your own, you got that fourteen point six seven, right?
Yes.
I think you're right, when you divide by two. Do you do it like this?
I do it like that, yeah.
Perfect, and so two goes into two one time, subtract it zero, bring down the nine, two goes into nine four times. Two goes into fifteen, four times. I'm sorry, seven times. Which is now fourteen minus six one, bring down the seven, two goes into seventeen, what is that? Seven times? Which is now sixteen. And so we could get a remainder of one, or if you go through and subtract it, you can take it to two, twenty nine point five seven zero. And bring this down, and then two will go into that remainder, one plus zero, which is ten, goes five times. And so fourteen point seven eight five is correct.
Okay, also, I have a question, I guess with the, I guess the decimals pretty much been tripping me up, I guess in terms of.
Yeah.
I get, even though I got it right, but the decimals still kinda trips me up a little bit, I guess it's just kinda.
Yeah, I texted you while you were working. Let's see if I have it. Should be right here. Oh, maybe I didn't text it, yeah, let me send it to you real quick. So I got these worksheets, I can send you the, the Google Drive where I'm keeping them all, but um, this is a really good one, since we were working so much on percentages. This is going to be kinda what we're looking at. Cool, and so we don't need the answers, these are one, these questions are alright, these ones weren't found on Instagram, so these ones should be all good. But you never know, once in a while you'll find a broken question. So. Let's zoom in. On the top ones for sure. Thing is kinda blurry, huh? Can you read that?
On an internet quiz contest. How many questions they can be right, yeah, I can read it.
And then so you would take eighty six percent of fifty to solve this one, so this is one that has decimals, do you wanna give that a shot?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot.
Alright, ready, go.
I think it's quicker. Dang, I got a little too overconfident, okay. No, I ain't get none of those.
Alright, cool, no worries, hey, let's uh, let me see if I can make it a little cleaner. Open it up here.
No, it was me, I, I think I did something, I, I did something wrong, I think.
No, it's all good, I mean, mistakes are important, right, like without mistakes, you don't get better, so.
Alright.
You're good. Alright, so on this question, whoa, where are we, here we go. And delete that, that is messy, let's try this one. Much better, alright, so on an internet quiz. Uh, fifty questions, so there's pro tips here, right, and I'll go over the pro tips with you afterwards. But if I want eighty six percent of fifty, all I'm gonna do is change this eighty six into a decimal, how do I change that into a decimal?
It'll be point eighty six.
Very good, eighty six cents, right, all day long.
Yes.
No problem there, and what am I gonna do, am I gonna add, subtract, multiply or divide?
Multiply.
Multiply, anytime I wanna take a percent of a number, I times it by that decimal. Is this what you did?
Yeah, I think I see where I did wrong.
So you can flip it too, it doesn't matter the order, you can do point eight six times fifty, should still give me the same answer. Just like three times five is five times three, doesn't matter the order.
Okay, hold on, I guess I'll text it to send you a screenshot what I did, I think I see what I did.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Get a picture of my line of thinking.
Yeah. That is a good call. Ah, yeah, added zeros, right, you changed it into fifty point zero zero. Gotcha.
Yeah. So I'm not supposed to change it at all, just.
No, with, with multiplication, you don't have to, now if you were subtracting eighty six cents from fifty dollars, you do, you want those decimals to line up. But if you're multiplying, there's no need.
Okay. So it'll just be fifty, just kinda just treat, so basically just treat it normally until after.
Yeah.
Once you finish with the problem, then you start to worry about the decimals.
Exactly, exactly, shift that decimal afterwards.
Alright.
Alright, I'll give you another shot, I think you can do it, your multiplication's been good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I got forty three.
Bunch of zeros, right?
It's, yeah, forty three point zero zero.
Cool. So which answer do you think's right?
Oh, C, would be C.
C is correct. And I'll go over the pro tips a little later, but you have the skills, this is the thing that kills me when people fail the ASVAB. Is you have the skills to do the addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, you're just not sure when to do it and how to do it properly sometimes. And so you're close, you just need a lot of practice with it, and that's why I sent the whole worksheet, so you could get a little bit more. Now, yeah, I think you're right, so you did, which one did you pick? Did you do the left side or the right side? Which way did you set it up?
I did the right side.
Right side, now, I'm gonna show you that the left side's a lot easier. But we'll do both sides, so with the left side, you go zero times six, zero, zero times eight, zero. Shift over for the five, and you do five times six is thirty. Five times eight, forty, forty three. And you get that forty three point, forty three zero zero, how many times do we shift the decimal? Based on the question, there's two there and none here, so it's gonna be two total.
Okay.
Three point zero zero. Good?
Yeah.
Cool, now let's do it this side, same thing, right, it's just a little bit, it's a little bit different looking now, so six times zero is zero, six times five is thirty. And then we shift over for the eight, eight times zero is zero, eight times five is forty. Add those up, you get that forty three zero zero, I can't tell you the number of students that say seven, right, cause they forget to shift. They'll do three plus, they'll like line it up so that that three and four are in, or in, in a row. Because they don't realize the eight is like a tens place, even though it's in a decimal, which is tenths, but still, you shift, right? Cause you're ignoring that decimal till the end. Now that we're at the end, count the number of decimals, count the number of decimals, get that forty three flat, questions here?
Yeah, I guess that's what tripped me up the first time when I. The decimal tripped me up, but also to, let's say it's like. Point, I guess it's. Say it's like point fifty, and it also be like. It'd be a decimal in like the, yeah, point fifty times like. Point zero. No.
Call it, no worries, no worries, so point fifty we'll keep, tell me what else? Like, there's no two numbers. That you shouldn't be able to multiply, right, all of the numbers in the infinite world. Like, I know five thousand six hundred ninety two is a bigger number, and it's gonna take longer. But you should be able to do that one, same with point zero 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 seven, right? You can still multiply it, it's just a matter of knowing what to do, so go ahead, what's the other number, you think?
I guess, I was about to say is, I guess. Zero point zero one.
Cool, and so this is one cent times fifty cents, right? Like, if you look at it with that, you can see very clearly, oh, well, that's a half penny, right? I got one penny, I cut that in half, that's gonna be a half penny, right? But if we were to go through and multiply it out, zero times one, zero, zero times zero, zero, zero times zero, zero, so. Normally, what I would do is completely ignore that, right, I would change point five zero into point five. Cause there's no point in, in doing all those zeros. And still times it by zero point zero one. But let's go, I, let's go back to this original way, now we do the five, five time, so we shift over, cause it's a tens place, right, shifts. Now five times one is five, and then five times zero, zero, times zero, zero, and so we add it all up, zero, zero, five, zero. Where does the decimal go? One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four. Point zero zero five, which is literally a half cent. Right, point zero one would be one cent, point zero zero five is a half of a cent.
Wait, so you add up all the decimals after?
Yep, so there's two up here, two down here, which makes four altogether.
Okay, even the decimals, okay, I guess the decimals wasn't aligned, so they kinda like.
Oh, yeah, so if we try it here, right, over here, it's no longer aligned. Right, we got zero point five times zero point zero one. It should be the same answer, because we're still just taking half of a penny, and so we get the same answer, five times one is five, and then a bunch of zeros. And then a whole bunch of zeros. And it's still zero, 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 five. And it doesn't matter how many zeros are out here, right, because we're counting from the right. So we count the number, one, two. And that's two, one, which is gonna be three. And we get the same answer.
Okay. That makes sense, okay, I was just confused on.
Yeah, decimals good, decimals can be complicated, especially if you haven't seen them in a while. Now, I'm gonna show you the pro tip here, cause I know we're out of time, we're just gonna do a quick hour, but the pro tip. What is fifty related to a hundred?
The related to a hundred?
Yeah, how much is fifty out of a hundred?
Could be fifty.
Yeah, it's fifty percent, right, it's half. So if I wanted eighty six percent of a hundred, we talked about this earlier, remember I was trying to get you to say what's five percent of a hundred? Right, what's, so what's eighty six percent of a hundred?
Eighty six?
Exactly, and so eighty six of half of a hundred. Is gonna be half of eighty six. Which is that forty three, and that's what you got. But fif- eighty six percent of a hundred is eighty six, eighty six percent of fifty is gonna be forty three. Because it's exactly half of that eighty six. Because fifty questions rather than a hundred questions.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So all, and that's the cool thing about this particular worksheet. If you look at it, there's gonna be a lot of good throwaway answers, right? So like, let me zoom in a little bit. Just on this first question, what can we eliminate right away? On an internet quiz contest, fifty questions, you got eighty six correctly, how many did you get right? What can we eliminate? What do we know that he did not get right, the number that he didn't, there's no way?
Fifty?
Fifty, why? Cause then he would have had to get a hundred percent right, so he only got eighty six. And then, like I said, forty three is exactly half of eighty six, which, where fifty is exactly half of a hundred. And that's where that relationship comes from.
Okay.
Alright, but you can eliminate forty, because if he got eighty percent right. That would be forty, and if he got eighty four percent, right, that would be that forty two. So getting familiar with those numbers and you can start running circles around these questions, but yeah, just take some practice.
Okay.
Alright, man, well, great work today, I'll stop recording now. Remember to be kind to yourself and treat yourself as a learner. Are you considering a career in the military but feeling overwhelmed by the ASVAB exam? Look no further than gaminaltutors.com for the best ASVAB prep courses. Our courses are designed by experienced instructors to help you master the best sections of the ASVAB exam. Including mathematics, English, and general science. We use proven teaching methods and provide extensive practice materials to ensure that you are fully prepared on test day. With gaminaltutors.com, you'll have access to comprehensive study guides, personalized tutoring sessions, and online practice exams. Our courses are available on demand, so you can learn at your own pace and on your own schedule. Don't let the ASVAB exam hold you back from achieving your career goals. Sign up for gaminaltutors.com ASVAB prep courses today. And take the first step towards a successful military career.